Good evening, everybody. I'm Mike Munna. I'm the Board Vice President in the absence of our Board President, Tom Drake. I'll be running the meeting this evening. Let's start the meeting off if we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? We have no changes, so can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the amendment.
Second.
A motion by Conway, second by Anderson, roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Very good. The next is the reception of visitors. The book doesn't have anybody signed in, but I'm guessing there's somebody that wanted to speak? Nobody press the board for their three minutes. Moving along to the President's Report, please.
We have no items in.
Tom Drake left nothing for me. He did share that he had a commitment. He's somewhere in Australia and he hopes to be back for commencement, he hopes. Moving along then into committee reports. Very good. And we have the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Munna. Good evening, everyone. Couple items, just the next couple of weeks down in Springfield are sure to be heavy with activity. I think there's at least three bills down there now that have some form or fashion of the evidence-based funding model in it, so there's never a guarantee, obviously, that there's going to be activity down there, but hopefully there's some progress made in terms of the state budget process. Also, thanks to all Board members and many people here who were at our Centennial Gala. We're counting our items down now in terms of our Centennial Gala, and we're actually on to number 98 and number 99, or 97 and 98 in our 100 events, which is our prom and post-prom this Saturday, so we're excited to finish. We also have an update. I think Karen wanted to give us a little bit of update on the solar program.
Yes, we, I've been notified from Kurt Hints from Performance Solutions, who has been working on a potential solar project for the district. Unfortunately, the district did not get the S-Rex credits in the last bidding cycle. I also talked to Kurt today. He is putting together another proposal. He thinks the project may still have some legs on it, and he would like to address the board at some point in the future, but at least the first round was not favorable for the district. But we will have more information to follow.
A few other small items, just as a reminder for Board members. We have on May 15th, we have our cum laude, magna cum laude, and summa cum laude honors night. That's over at Oak Plain at seven o'clock. On Wednesday, the 17th, we have our senior awards and scholarship night, also in Oak Plain, graduation. Another piece of information that I have before our departmental report is I did include with my report this week, an Appendix B Committee Recommendations. Annually, the Appendix B Committee meets to try to see whether or not in between years of the collective bargaining agreement, whether or not there's certain clubs or activities that should be sponsored for the following year. And so there's a committee that meets, oh, four or five times a year to try to just get our hands on some proposals and review them. And so the list that I gave the board, some of them were things that we've talked about for a while in terms of girls and boys lacrosse becoming IHSA next year, and so obviously we need some support for them. Also have, as I've communicated to the board earlier, a number of what we're calling conditional positions, and those are for athletic programs and our Science Olympiad program, that we're hoping that they have enough students involved next year to warrant an additional level. So those are kind of conditional on enough athletes and/or Science Olympiad students coming out to participate. Keep in mind that with the, especially particularly with the athletic programs, the costs of those programs are offset by the $2.25 athletic fee for those students. So, obviously, it's a significant offset in terms of cost. And then another few that were on there, smaller items, were one additional tech theater position, a French National Honor Society position, and one additional FBLA position just for next year, because we have a commitment leadership transition happening next year, and we want to make sure that, and to next year. We want to make sure we try to build a succession plan and precedent plan for FBLA. Were there any questions?
So the, so when the lacrosse teams become IHSA, then, so they're in existence now, obviously, and they're a self-funded program, correct?
That's correct.
But when they become IHSA, is there, is that a requirement that we start paying for that, or can they stay funded the way they are? I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know.
It's generally done community by, I mean, there are a few communities that haven't gone IHSA, and those are probably communities that, from what I understand, they don't necessarily want to. It's more important for their individual athletes to get attention through their lacrosse as opposed to participating in the IHSA competitions and series. So for us, we've always tried to as much as possible support the IHSA, but there is, there are.
I didn't mean that we shouldn't necessarily be in the IHSA. I'm just saying that we have to, do they have to be, do coaches have to be paid by the school once we become IHSA? Or can they, because right now, they're not paid by the school.
Right. I'm not.
They don't pay fees either.
Right.
I understand. I'm just asking if that's, if IHSA is a requirement, then at that point, that we have to pay for it. I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just, I don't know. I'm just curious. It'd be good information to have at some point. I'm just, you know, I don't.
That is a good question.
Okay.
And the last piece, so the last piece of information that we did want to talk about was our Special Education Department. So as we try to communicate to the board, we have some departments that report, oh, every two years, and some departments that we want to make sure have a report to the board every year, just because there's some dynamics involved with special education in particular, that we wanted to make sure we educate the board on. So I. Thank you very much.
I'm the Special Education Supervisor here at the Almond Campus and Transition Center.
And I'm Cory Geiser, I'm Special Education Supervisor at Oak Plain, and I supervise the C-Doll programming.
So what we're going to do today is to go ahead and give you an update on our department. We did meet last, oh, last April, so a lot of this information will just be updates from last year. Okay? If you can click for me. Thanks. So just as a brief overview, during the 2015-2016 school year, when the district went through the strategic planning process, we worked in conjunction, excuse me, to go ahead and develop our philosophy. So just wanted to kind of identify some highlights. So we believe in our Special Education Department that continuous improvement occurs through our continuum of services, and that we need to maximize our student independence and self-advocacy for personal growth, and that we need to make sure that rigor and support is provided through student programs and staff development, and that decision-making occurs when there's data and best practices are reviewed. We need to make sure that we are promoting innovation and creativity, as well as providing a safe and learning, inviting learning environment, and diversity always honored.
We also wanted to talk about the students that we support. About 12% of the district is students in special education. They have IEPs. They're in a variety of the eligibility categories, and so I thought a pie chart would give you a good representation. The largest group of students that we support are, or that you support as teachers, is students with a specific learning disabilities, followed by students with emotional disabilities. We've got 13% of our kids with other health impairments, and that could be students with ADHD, students with anxiety, students with some medical issues. 9% of our students, and they're at either campus, are students with intellectual disabilities. From there, it goes on down. We've got kids with speech-language impairments, we've got students with hearing impairments both on and off campus, we've got a few students with orthopedic impairments, multiple disabilities, and then it shows up as zero, but we've got some kids with traumatic brain injury, deafness, and vision impairments. This is what our kids look like, that 12% of our population here at Warren. We also wanted to talk to you about our student service teams at both campuses. We've got teams that consist of our deans, our guidance counselors, and our social workers at both campuses. Our psychologists participate in this as well. When kids are in a crisis situation, they're recommended for a team, and these are students that are not IEP students. The team comes together and they meet weekly in their small groups, and then they come together when there's a student in a crisis situation. We hear from our parents, we hear from teachers, we hear from the deans, sometimes our teachers are the ones who refer the kids, and we work to identify what it is the kids need. If the students qualify for a 504 plan, that might be the first step that we take. If we feel that something more is warranted, then we talk about a case study evaluation. We do have current supports in place for our kids. We've got the ARC program, we've got fail-safe, the kids meet with our social workers, guidance counselors, or the psychologists. There are all kinds of supports that are already built in, but when we feel that those are not enough, then we move forward with our student support team referral service. And if a kid is recommended for a case study evaluation, it's a 60-day process, we use our psychologists to move forward with most of those in that case.
Okay, so what we're going to do is walk you through a variety of services and supports that we provide for our students. If you can click for me, Karen. You heard me mention a few minutes ago about our continuum of services. We wanted to provide you an overview of what our continuum of services look like here at Warren. So you can see, in the most least restrictive environment, we have our general education honors advanced placement courses, where our students receive some level of accommodation. We also have co-taught classes, supervised study hall, which we'll talk about more in a few minutes. Our instructional cross-categorical classes and self-contained programs. We also have students that participate in extended school year as determined by their IEP, therapeutic day, and residential settings. Okay? All of our students have access to related services as determined by their IEP as well. So for those of you who were here a couple of months ago, we did a pretty extensive audit of our transition program, but I know that we have some new board numbers, so we wanted to just go ahead and give you a quick overview of our transition services here. Our transition program supports our students with vocational and independent living needs after they have finished the first four years of high school through the age of 22. What we did through this process is we identified five areas that we wanted to help to support these students. So student-focused planning, main way in which we help to support that is having our students actively participate in the IEP process. In terms of family engagement, we are always looking for parent participation in terms of planning for what life is going to look like after the student's 22nd birthday. In terms of program structures, this really allows us the opportunity to focus in on providing individual educational opportunities for students. Inter-agency collaboration, always looking to expand our partnerships in the community, and then student development. This is the area that we really address, kind of in the classroom, instructionally, everything from vocational skills to self-determination, advocacy, functional life skills, daily living, things along those lines. Okay? Case management is a very large part of our continuum of services. So between the two campuses, we have four main case managers. What's important to note about this model is our case managers loop with their students for two years. Okay? They also provide a direct link to support with our guided staff in terms of scheduling courses, things along those lines. We also have some program case managers for some more of our self-contained programs. So at Oak Plain, we have an evolution and functional program, which we'll talk more about in a minute. At Almond, we also have an evolution, we also have a life skills and functional program. And then at Transition, we have two programs up there, which, again, for those of you who weren't here, we did our transition review. It's our sales and CALS program. So sales stands for Supported Adult Living Skills, and then the CALS stands for Career Adult Living Skills.
We wanted to make sure to talk to you about our instructional services that we've got, and Karen and I will tag-team on this one. In 2013, we introduced co-teaching to our school, and we started here at the Almond Campus with our algebra classes. From there, it's done nothing but grow. We, in 2015-16, we had 20 co-taught classes at both campuses and 25 this current year, 57 in our cross-categorical, and 60. And how that breaks down is we've got, we have eight at Oak Plain, and this year, we've got 13, or 12, excuse me. Next year, we're going to increase a little bit more. The cross-categorical flip-flops, because that is where we're taking our kids and we're giving them more challenge and more rigor. So as you see, even though this was a flip-flop, you can see that these are growing, and it's going to continue to do so, because we want to make sure that we expose our kids to the rigor that they can manage.
So what we did for the remainder of our programs, these are a little bit more self-contained in nature, so we decided to go ahead and give you actual numbers of students as opposed to the number of sections that we have. Within our co-taught and our cross-categorical classes, students kind of ebb and flow depending on where their deficit areas are. So you could be in a co-taught math class, but a general education English course, or you could be in a functional, like, I'm sorry, a cross-categorical English class, but have math be a strength and be in the general education environment. So we didn't feel like identifying the number of students would give you an accurate picture, so that's why we went with sections for the first two. In terms of our, this second chart here, we have our functional program, which is, you can see, I'm sorry, my beverage is over there, so can, no, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get it to the other end. Go ahead. There you go. You can see that our functional program is growing. It really kind of does depend on the year in terms of what our students need. But our functional program is a more self-contained environment, where we have students that are working off a modified curriculum, and in some cases, an alternate curriculum. They are typically performing about four grade levels or lower academically than their same age peers. Okay? Our educational life skills is our most supportive environment here within the district. It is housed here at Almond, grades nine through 12. So we have had a bit of an increase in there. This program does work on an academic piece, but it really has a very strong functional and daily living skill component. This program and the curriculum in there is alternative. We align it to some of the core concepts in the general education setting, but it really is a very modified alternate curriculum. In terms of our evolution program, this program is designed to help students who have some more significant emotional and/or behavioral challenges. You can see here that our numbers have increased a little bit. This program does ebb and flow based on student needs. It's really designed for students who have had some difficulty and some struggles in the general education and/or cross-categorical classes, and really need to have a more significant level of behavior management. You'll see a lot of independent, or I'm sorry, individualized behavior plans, and there's also embedded social work supported in that program. Okay? You can click for me.
One of the programs that is unique to special education is our Supported or Supervised Study Hall. And the curriculum, the instruction component to it is relatively new. We went through it last year, and we decided that we need to put some more meat behind how we support the kids in this program. So through a few of our staff members, they went to a program at Rush, and we taught and trained our staff. We're working on some executive functioning through these skills, the organization, the planning, the memory, the note-taking. These are all skills that are really critical to our high school students. That advocacy piece, how do I approach teachers? How do I ask for that work when I've been absent, or how do I say that I need more help? Of course, we all know that our kids need those study skills. We're working on some task prep and then some self-care, because that transition to high school is really challenging for our kids, and we want to make sure that we embed some of these really important skills with our students. The emphasis is placed on that organization part, while the teams in both campuses are monitoring that academic progress. There is that instructional framework that is part of it. It's some direct instructions, some guided work time. There is flexibility with the scheduling that's involved in there. It's differentiated from the freshman level through the senior level, and there is some measure of data collection. What we've done, at the Oak Plain Campus, we had seven supervised study halls, and Almond had three in the 15-16 school year. We increased it to nine. I actually had room for one more in my building this current school year with five here at Almond. And then we are going to have, next year, we're going to have six at Oak Plain, and we'll have seven here at Almond. We recognize that these students, and it was, again, this Special Education Subcommittee from Strategic Planning, that we talked about this process, and we recognize that our kids did need the support. They don't always come to high school ready for these things, so we wanted to make sure that when we send the kids into their classes, whether it's general education or special education, that they've got these skills. And we're working very hard to train those kids to be ready for the classes.
Some additional areas that we would like to focus on in terms of our supervised study. We really want to make sure that we are offering continued support for our students, I'm sorry, for our staff, and the listening feedback from our staff directly, so we can figure out what's working, what's not working, what do we need to make some changes on. We want to begin to plan with our curriculum teams to organize and differentiate the curriculum across grade levels. This year, pretty much everybody worked on the same piece, because it was year one of the curriculum, but we'll be doing some summer curriculum writing, hopefully, I guess, so we can go ahead and provide some additional differentiation. We want to make sure that we're aligning curriculum topics with relevant events here. We do a lot, we have built in our scope and sequence, and in terms of our organization of the class, we try to really kind of match things, but I think that we can do a better job. We learned that we needed to spend more time on certain areas and less time on others, so we'll be doing some additional work with that. We are always looking to improve our data collection techniques, something that we're really excited about and hoping to make some progress on, is we want to have some additional conversations to see if we can bring this course forward, to see if we can start issuing some credit. For currently, right now, our students that are enrolled in supervised study are not receiving any credit for their participation in their work in that class. So it's something that we're going to engage in some additional conversations on, and, you know, see kind of how it goes. We also started having some conversations with our general education counterparts to see how some of these strategies and some of the instruction that we're doing in this course, we can bring over to help to support our general education students. So we're very excited about these future years.
It is necessary from time to time to send our students to our therapeutic day schools, both the co-op through C-Doll and our private therapeutic placements. We thought it was important to share with you where our students were last year and where they are currently. C-Doll has about 32 kids. This year, there are 35, and I say about because we have kids that are coming and going, whether they move out of the district or we reintegrate them back here to Warren. The therapeutic placements in the private schools, 70 the year before, 72 currently, and we actually have five, six, seven kids who are working their way back into being back on campus full-time. Residential is a really unusual number. We had five students last year, we have six currently, but of these six, we've got two who are already reintegrating back to the home schools. So it's something that they're not permanently placed in these therapeutic locations. They are there to get their needs met, to train them in some things that, it's oftentimes we have students with emotional disabilities, and we want to get them back to home campus, so that's where our number lies, but it's always in flux, because we have the kids who are coming back to us all the time.
Are those private therapeutic?
The ther, where are they named?
Connections.
Connections, actually, the Learning House and Connections has probably most of our kids with the five different Connections campuses. South Campus, Connections East, Connections Day School, New Connections Academy, and the Virtual Connections. So they hold most of our kids with the Sid Lash program being next.
But we really do have students kind of spread out throughout the county, as well as some students who attend schools in county, based on.
We've got numbers rather large.
This one?
Private therapeutic?
Yes, yes. Yeah. Can you click for me? Yes. Here's, here's. This one is where my heart lies. We've worked very hard over the last five or six years to have some really solid articulation with our feeder schools. It's very important, because our kids transitioned to Oak Plain, they transitioned to Almond, and then they graduate, we're in a really unique situation. So when we bring the kids to us, we want to make sure that our feeder schools understand our programming, and that with regard to the students with special education services, that the parents and the case managers understand. So this year was the first year that we actually sent our case managers to the feeder schools, and they met with, I've got 113 incoming kids, they met with nearly all of the parents. And we had a few who didn't show, but we make sure that they understand our course offerings, they understand their placement. A lot of times, supports look very different in the lower grades than they do here. So we want to make sure that the families and the staff there understand that. We talk about what supports look like, and at the age of 14 and a half, we have to begin transition planning for our kids, and somewhere, I've got my transition specialist here. We talk, it's really important for the kids and the parents to know that the course offerings are a dedicated group of classes. If the student says, "I want to be a airline pilot," we have to make sure we're involving the student in the right kinds of classes. So we begin that discussion. We also assist with the placement. We want to make sure that these meetings are all held before we have our course selection night at the Oak Plain Campus. We want to make sure that when the students pick their electives, they're even placed correctly in those electives. And then it's really important that it establishes that parent and student relationship. It's one more face that when the student comes into school, they can say, "I know you, I recognize you." And it's a really good way to begin that process of becoming a Blue Devil.
Thank you, Karen. One more. So our special education staffing plan, a couple of things that I'd like to point out before we go through the charts, just in terms of our class size and in terms of our staffing plan, we base it all off of student need as well as our ISBE regulations. So when we start looking at the number of certified teachers and paraprofessionals, it's all based on percentage of service. So just so you have a little bit of an understanding on how we derive at those numbers. You can see here that we have two special education supervisors, Cory and myself. As we shared in the beginning, Cory works at Oak Plain, as well as the C-Doll Dr. class or programs, and I'm at Almond in Transition. At Oak Plain, we have 16 certified teachers. At Almond, we did add Transition in here as well, so we currently have three certified teachers at Transition. Here are our paraprofessionals. We do have more paraprofessionals here at Almond based on our student level of need, because we have the ELS program that really does house the majority of our paraprofessionals. In terms of social work, Oak Plain has 3.2, Almond has four, and then Transition has eight. This person, she goes back and forth. Okay? And it's important to note, too, that our social workers work not only with our special education students, but also our general education students. We have one speech pathologist at each location, and then we have some contactive services for about three days up here at Transition. We have one psychologist at Oak Plain. Our psychologist here at Almond goes back and forth between here and Transition when needed. We also have occupational therapists, physical therapists, and a hearing itinerant. It's important to note, too, that we do have clerical support at all three locations right up front there. Cost and reimbursement. So special education has a variety of different reimbursements that are available to us from the government. So it's important to note that personal reimbursement, we do get quite a bit of funds back. Any staff that are employed for any of these reasons, so ranging from teachers to school psychologists, to class remains, to administrators, speech and language pathologists, hearing itinerants, we have, we get reimbursed. Okay? So each certified staff member, we have $9,000 we get back, and each classified staff member, we get $35 back.
We, as our co-op, C-Doll, we want to talk about what the tuition ranges are. We have our kids at Sid Lash, it's $25, $6, $37 per student. Our students at Laramie, we only have a handful of kids there. It's a little more, and those students are more labor-intensive based on the student needs at $37, $6. We have three students currently that are at our Grayslake North Campus, and it's 32, 422, and those students, one junior, two freshmen, and our Transition students that are in C-Doll programming are about, I averaged this out, it's about $30,000 a student. And C-Doll has some really interesting transition programs. There are locations in Grayslake, Mundeline, and in Vernon Hills, and they have a few locations this summer that I think are Wakanda and Lake Zara. So our Transition kids that are not in our Transition program are taking advantage of some really unique needs through the C-Doll programming. As far as our private programming costs, what I did was I took an average for the 72 students, and it's about $34,000 a student for the tuition. This includes the tuition. students and it's about 34,000 a student for the tuition. This includes the tuition for the residential students as well. And we are responsible for the two per capita of 25.9 and then the remaining is reimbursed at 90 to 94 percent.
Does that include when a student has moved to therapeutic school for the diagnostic? Is that the tuition, just strictly the tuition cost or is that built in?
I included, I, for a diagnostic right now, and I included them in that. So.
So in terms of reimbursement, though, we do not, we are not able to claim like a general education certificate for diagnostic.
Until they qualify.
Unless they qualify, eventually we can. But initial diagnostic placement, we're not able to claim for the reimbursement, but that-
That's above and beyond what the yearly tuition is?
The diagnostics are, yes.
Correct.
Oh, gosh, you know, I just got those and I didn't include it in this. I can get that to you if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yep.
In terms of our residential programming, currently, right now, we have six students that are residentially placed. You can see room and board, this is where our average is. Yearly tuition would be the same in terms of therapeutic. And when we take a look at the reimbursement rates, it's important to note, we receive 90 to 95 percent back in terms of reimbursement out of this range. Okay? Tuition, same as for the private therapeutic. The district is responsible for two per capita, which equates out to about 26,000. And then the remaining is reimbursed at that 90 to 94. So there is a pretty significant reimbursement in terms of the, uh-
The room and board.
In terms of transportation, we have all these students that are out of house. We need to get them there. So we are responsible for the transportation as well. So what we did last year when we presented to you, we took a look, I believe it was the 14-15 school year, and the transportation in terms of reimbursement, it's always a little slow to get to us right here. So we want to have it included, the 15-16 school year. So this is the amount that we spent on transportation, so about 1,800, probably were reimbursed at 80 percent for a total of about 1,300. Okay? Quick. Uh-oh. Okay, well, next slide was any questions?
That's right.
So, any questions we can answer for you?
Yes.
If you catch your mind, you're going to get the diagnostic.
I will.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's all for the superintendent's report. Mr. Munda?
Thank you very much. Then moving into new business.
I've included the engagement letter that is addressed to the Board of Education, which outlines the scope of the audit and of the district's financial statements. The board president is required to sign the engagement letter along with the superintendent. This is required to begin the audit process. It explains the scope and what the auditors will do and will not do. Our auditors are Miller Cooper and Company and their process will begin in June 2007 with a review of our internal controls, the financial statement. Fieldwork will begin at the end of August. The audit, audit process is similar to last year. The governmental accounting standards boards has issued a couple of new pronouncements that will change our footnotes, but this is not an action item of the board. The audit is a required process under the Illinois School Code, so this is for your information with asking the board president to sign that.
Anybody have any questions on the audit process? Ben, the approval of the mall at Gurnee Mills lease agreement for the Transition program for, starting July 1st of 17 through June 30th of 2020. Wow.
So the, with the increase in the size of the special ed transition program at Gurnee Mills, the special ed administration has asked us to obtain additional space. Currently, we have just under 6,000 square feet. We're asking the board to approve another 1,250 square feet. The rent would increase by $1,500 from $3,759 to $5,259 per month. Square foot cost is, was $7.56 annually per square foot and that will go to 8.73. The terms of the lease actually have not changed from the last lease. And again, this would be a three-year lease. Our current lease is set to expire August 31st. This lease would begin on July 1st, 2017. This would allow our maintenance staff time to do some renovations. The new space is really a, a storage unit, storage space that's pretty, pretty blank and it would stay as a factory-type environment. The, there will be cost of renovation. We've had our architects in for CAD drawings. We're hoping to budget the renovation cost at about $30,000, including fees. Of course, we do not have ADA requirements yet, but I've included a copy of the new lease and the letter from the Simon Group, which manages the, the property. So the administration is asking that the board approve the new lease. Yes.
Estimated electrical cost per month?
I do not have that information. That was actually in the old lease. The space is metered, but it is not metered individually. It is, it includes Gurnee Mills office space, but our space is about 95 percent of that. So unfortunately, I can get that answer for you, but for the first three years, even though it was in the lease, Gurnee Mills did pay the electric cost. So.
That's okay.
That's another opportunity to spend our, spend our solar program to the roof.
No.
Never say never, right?
I'm not.
Any other questions on the agreement at Gurnee Mills with Simon Foundation Corporation? Standing program, if the space would be good use and continue to provide services, population of- Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the mall at Gurnee Mills agreement for the Transition program from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020 at a monthly rent of $5,292.
Okay.
Motion by Conway, second by Walls. Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the reciprocal reporting system agreement between the Gurnee Police Department, the Village of Gurnee, and the Board of Education of Warren Township High School, School District 121.
A board, the current reciprocal reporting agreement that we have, we believe is from 1999 and much has changed since then in terms of reporting. So this is the reciprocal agreement with the Village of Gurnee and the Gurnee Police Department. We may see one also in the next couple of months from the Lake County Sheriff, but this one is strictly for the Village of-
Any questions from the board on reporting? One? A motion, please.
I move to approve the reciprocal reporting system agreement between the Gurnee Police Department, the Village of Gurnee, and the Board of Education of Warren Township High School, District 121.
Motion by Anderson, second by Conway. Roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
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 I have six yes. Motion carries.
Next, we have the approval of the fiscal year 18 tentative staffing plan.
Thank you, Mr. Munda. There's one recommended change in our tentative staffing plan for next school year. We have a reduction of math position and so we wanted to make sure we included that in our staffing plan for Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Schultz. This report, this enrollment decline in staffing report, we present to the board several times through the year as or, and/or as there's changes. And so this is a small change, but it also allows you to see this report that helps us track our staffing.
Any questions on staffing planning? Then I'll move to approve the fiscal year 18 tentative staffing plan as presented.
Second.
Motion by Munda, second by Wilson. Roll call.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
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 Wallace?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Anderson?
Good. We have the approval of the six-month review of the closed session minutes from July 19th through 2016 through December 13th, 2016. Any questions on anything there? None?
Not for me.
And motion, please.
I move to keep the executive session minutes closed from July 19th, 2016, August 16th, 2016, September 13th, 2016, September 27th, 2016, October 25th, 2016, November 7th, 2016, November 15th, 2016, and December 13th, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Schultz. Roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. The approval of the hiring recommendations per Exhibit A. Any questions from the board about-
All looks good to me.
And motion, please. I'll move to approve Exhibit A, Hiring Recommendations, numbers, number 206 through 218 as posted.
Second.
Motion by Munda, second by Walls. Roll call.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Yes. Right along, we have the approval of the payment of the bills for 592017.
I move to approve the payment of bills for May 9th, 2017, in the amount of $399,995. Second.
Motion by Conway, second by Wilson. Roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize for keeping everyone waiting.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Six yes. Motion carries.
And our final agenda item is the approval of the regular meeting minutes and the executive session minutes of April 25th, 2017.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of 7:00 PM and 8:32 PM of April 25th, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Wilson. Roll call.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Name?
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I have five yes and one extension. Motion carries.
Anything else? Thank you, everybody, for coming. Good seeing everybody. And I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Munda, second by Walls. Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That is-
Were you waiting to-
Waiting to do it.
Yes, they do.
They stay, right? You be well. Best to your family.
I wasn't as long as you thought it would be. Oh, I know you were like, "Oh."
Yeah.
Bean, do you have anything for me to sign?
I have a couple things.